We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, which art in heaven, dear Lord God, is once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace. Dear Lord God, thank you for your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and for all of your many blessings bestowed upon the city of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continuously bless our Janet Matha and her family during their time of bereavement, that you grant them comfort, Lord God, in Jesus' name. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor pro tem, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads on tonight, as we gather together to make the decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. In everything we do, we pray we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. What's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Can I get approval of the agenda to include executive session to discuss economic development on Highway 34? All right, dogs in the papers. In the names. You know, I'm in a, I'm in an old church with old people. And, you know, my mother-in-law died just passed, you know, about two weeks ago in Charleston Farm, a long, you know, time citizen, just passed away, had funeral, and then, you know, we're getting involved. No, it, um, we all gonna do it, but I tell you, when you, when you, when you have someone pass in a town like Dillon, it's good. The outpouring of love and food and it, it's reassuring that that's why you chose to live in a community this size. We have our problems, we have our challenges, but life is good. Life is good in Dillon. Steve, uh, Charles' son, eulogized and he talked about coming back and riding through Dillon and the things that he enjoyed or the times that he enjoyed with his dad, times at the country club, playing golf, swimming in the pool, and growing up here. And it's, it's, it's a good place. The, uh, you know, I've been reached, someone reached out to me about what we're gonna go into executive session. And part of my comments back to him was that the, the long-term dream of Dillon, I think of this route, is that we move west on, on that 34th quarter. And that, you know, I mean, that's our goal, as I understand. To have possibly sewage treatment, possibly getting out the Harley Bridge Road maybe even. And the process of annexation makes that possible for us. Having, you know, expanding that sewage treatment plant so that we're not pumping stuff all the way to Little Rock, or all the way from Little Rock to Lakeview to get sprayed. So, um, I think that, that part of the process that we need to embrace, and I think a successful government body should embrace, is that we may not make all the decisions that impact the next year or two years, but we may need to make the hard call on making decisions that'll impact this community in the next 20 to 25 years. And that's not met with a lot, a lot of glory and all that, and that's, that I think is okay with this group. I think they're that type of people. So, we'll, we'll, you know, have that discussion during executive session. And certainly, I think the heart of, of this group is, is that we want to grow Dillon and develop Dillon, and certainly don't want to be an obstacle in that process. I think Trick or Treat was a tremendous success. I don't know that we blew out any, you know, records as far as COVID, and had a, had a good time. I'm always glad, you know, we've got, I don't know, 30 or 40 kids on that little trailer and golf carts running and kids running all over the place. I always worry that we're gonna, we're gonna have an accident, but we try to, try to be careful. But everybody got back okay. But, but again, I think the Halloween event of Dillon is, is unique and special and, and good. To see someone from the outside witness what happened, it was the surgeon in town. It was, was pretty good. His son, I don't know, age probably 10 or 11, came up to me and said, "This is the best Halloween ever."
They're from the north.
They're from Maine.
Yeah, it's snowing there.
So, uh, so that was, that was very good. And I, I, you know, I think that maybe we ought to be, we gotta notice, I'd love to show this notice about the Christmas parade. Um, I reckon maybe we need to hear from you when how that's supposed to look. It's, it's pretty sparse when I look at the restrictions that we're making. Well, Christmas parade, they don't have to, they be in the Chamber of Commerce, will have to follow the gaiety set by government, so to speak. Whatever those gaieties mean. And I do know that...
No marching bands?
Yeah, there's...
No dance?
I mean, I, I have no idea what they have.
But, yeah.
There's no float.
No floats?
Well, there's no float rental. The float rental company that she has used in the past is they would be able to come from the good find garage. Now, I'm not saying that Dillon internal medicine, because I don't know if they put on their own float, but, you know. And the marching bands, I'm assuming that's the school's call, whether or not they're able to do what they need to do. Yeah, when they go to the high school, they're all spread out and all that, so, um, anyway, um, I might touch the report. We're, we're still, um, still seeing COVID pace, uh, some cases of it. But I think as, as things go, we're, we're probably in a pretty good place as far as, um, the city goes and the state goes. I think we're, we're, we're still in a pretty good place. And that's all I have.
I'm gonna follow up with, it's some good news as well. You talked about Halloween and Trick or Treat. If you didn't have an opportunity, you didn't come out or the police department's front crew that sailed out here. It was amazing, I would agree. Chief, and Chief Bailey, I mean, they had a lot of people here an hour and a half. And the good thing is people walked a half a mile.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that is a better idea to do going forward, you know?
I, I think Chief, if I'm wrong, most of your folks probably enjoyed it.
And it's safer, I think it's much safer as opposed to being downtown. And not that we don't want to encourage the, you know, the traffic downtown, but...
It was, it was a good time to hail by hall, if they could say. And then as far as Trick or Treat goes, there were no issues that we know of. It went pretty smoothly. You know, last week, this time, we were getting ready for general elections. This body passed an ordinance back in May for providing Sunday alcohol sales. It'd be put on the referendum. And this body did exactly what they were supposed to. They didn't go out and push that, let the voters decide, and the voters did decide. Roughly 60% of the people voted in favor of allowing alcohol sales on premise on Sunday, which would be in restaurants. And then the other question was, passed 60% to allow businesses to sell alcohol on Sundays off-premise, meaning grocery stores and convenience stores. The Dillon County Election Commission met Friday morning. They certified all the ballots along with the two questions that were on the ballot. I submitted that today to Department of Revenue, and they will then start the process. And when that process will begin, I'm not sure, but probably first of December, those folks that, that sell alcohol today will be able to sell it on Sundays if they purchase a permit through the Department of Revenue. So, do you have an idea what that cost?
I don't know.
Jay, do you have an idea what the cost is for a permit on Sunday?
It's probably gonna be, um, $30 on a Sunday, so it'd be around $1,500 per day.
Per day on Sunday, so it doesn't have to be many Sundays. And I did not realize that until today.
It's per chief.
It is, but at the same time, the money that the business has paid at Department of Revenue for Sunday alcohol sales, the Department of Revenue does not keep that kind of factually.
Come on.
100%. So, you figuring 1,500 per business, per sack, per son, I mean, per year, is that what you said?
That's correct.
We have four or five businesses.
Really, Julie, I think it's time to regret you have a lot more than that. Most of these communities that converted, um, were about 50/50 to begin with, and then probably they're around 80%, 85% in the third year.
But that did pass. And all paperwork has been submitted to Department of Revenue to begin that process. And I should hear back something from the voters by the end of this week. Last month, a month before last, they gave you a list of grants that we have applied for and got, have been awarded. Also gave you a list of grants that have been applied and underway, you know, awards. Rural Infrastructure is a grant through Department of Commerce awarding sewer. We were awarded last week $471,000, if I'm right. $471,000 to rehab, the paint on Duxton and 20th Avenue. And that's gonna entail, just as we did on Highway 9, Race Track Road, repainting, cleaning the inside. Anything else? Just some stuff I'm doing in the roads and stuff. So, we got $471,000 that we got through.
Those wells, how old are they? I mean, the pump?
I'm not sure. You know what age they are? I think the one that's at 20th is like, oh, the 80s?
80s?
Yeah, in the 80s, yeah. Not 80, but here.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, that'll be a taken place here, probably beginning...
What's the lifetime on that?
About like that.
I don't know where she comes from, but the border is I-9, Alden, 16. Got any to lie to that? What's, what's that for?
Sorry?
What's that? I have no idea what, how many gallons it does or...
Yeah, 20 does about 500 and some gallons a gallon.
So, you talked about 150, 200,000 for that pump?
But that, that is okay. I'm assuming the bidding process will begin sometime in January, February time frame with that project. And if it went as well as the one we did here at Race Track Road, um, once they started, they completed it probably in four months' time. So, that was a quick turnaround, something that we like to see. Also, put in your packet, you've got an invitation, I believe, from the Dillon Community Alliance, having an after hours on Thursday at 5:30 to 7:30 o'clock in the courtyard. But I believe due to weather, Stephanie, you've got, looking to change it down here, am I correct?
That's correct. You certainly want everybody, whichever it can, might invite you, you'd like this.
Play the strings here nice, but we didn't have the habitat.
Yeah.
We had such gorgeous weather and that, you know, had they cleaned up and done all the...
They were working on that this week, so hopefully the weather will treat it right back. I don't think it's gonna happen. Last Thursday, myself along with A. Com, the engineer, I'm doing the stormwater master plan. We held our first public meeting here in this room. Last Thursday at 6 o'clock, they were here to discuss with the citizens that came, what they were doing, how they were doing it, and kind of kind of frank, pretty much what we told you all last week. We had seven citizens to attend, and those seven were pretty much the seven that I've talked to, or burgers talked to in the last two years, and what is known as the bottoms that we've heard about before. They're also about South 6th Avenue area and 301, uh, South 301, one of those folks were here. The next one is for this coming Thursday at 6 o'clock, and then we'll have one more after that on the 17th at 6:00 AM to do our public hearings. So, they taking information from these folks, and they'll go back and document it and look at these specific areas that they haven't seen it yet. And that's the purpose of the meeting. Also, on your table, I left you a map. And this is just for discussion, discussion on. We'll take a vote on it, but I want to have some kind of idea of what to do next month, if something you're interested. On this map highlighted in yellow, this is on the north end of Highway 301, just south of the golf course, and just north of the location we are right now, is property owned by Mr. Robert Johnson, 102 acres. He would like to donate that to the sea. Right now, if you're looking at this map, it shows a lot of timber. That timber has now been cleared, so it's pretty open land. Now, we'll be using low lying areas because it's had a peaty river and a swamp. I think down the road for future purposes, you know, you know how many of the city in this room you'd ever see it happen, but there's a possibility of some development there from a recreational standpoint, because it's here on the river. There's also some possibilities that we possibly could get some property to get us from where we are here to, to the river by getting some agents or some more land donation. If it's something that you folks are interested in, I will bring back next month to accept this 102 acres of land and donate it to the sea.
You mean that in form?
Well, I don't need emotion, just, you know, kind of, if there's somebody or some of you...
Is there any liability?
No, no liability. I mean, I mean, if there's, you know, if you're not interested, you tell me you're not interested as a whole, which at least that gives me some idea. Tell me you are interested, doesn't mean that I'll just go forward, bring the paperwork. We can vote on it, but, you know, type of deal. And then the purpose, he came to me last year, about a week after our December meeting, wanted to do something at that time. And I told him it was just too late in the year for us, because I need to come back to council. But, you know, is there, if he's doing it for tax purposes, it was worth doing there. I could not tell you what the value of the land is. I have no idea what that is. But it's, he did here, probably six months to a year ago to get the best timber off. And maybe he'd like to that maybe.
Anything like that?
You say we, a suggestion for it or just what we can use? That's what you're saying?
Well, right now, the use could be, if we got, if we had it today, you know, we could start planning for future use. You really couldn't build nothing there on it.
Couldn't, um, couldn't the police department and the fire department do something like training there?
Hey, you possibly could, you know. I, I will, when we purchased this property 15 years ago, I always had the vision of going north to the river. That, this is on the other side of the river, but if we can get from here to the river, then that brings us there and, you know...
Like a nature trail or something like that, to cross the river and go, you know, to the club.
So, I mean, there's, there's some, a lot of possibilities. Again, growth, looking for growth, type of deal, so, you know.
And the reason that you could, most of it is water, is weapons?
Is weapons, yeah.
You could pick, so, people do pickings and stuff like that.
Well, you may could, you know, once you got in there and, and seen exactly, this time of the year, I'm not walking. When it gets real cold, I will go.
There you go.
It's a lot drier than it used to be.
But, I mean, there could be some, some possibilities of that. I mean, just a, a water feature, if nothing else, that we'd be close to or have access to down the road.
It's a good deer heading.
But this is a good deer heading out here as well, along with coyotes and everything else. So, yeah, just a, I'm getting everything negative feedback, so I'll bring back something next month that I've worked on it and bring back to whether or not you want to pass to accept it or not accept it at that time. But I wanted to give you that information tonight, just so you know what I'm feeling about it. That's all I have at this point.
Well, you can go over to finance if you want. I could probably...
Anybody have any questions on the finance?
She didn't get to finish her cover sheet. She was working on this Thursday and Friday as things turned, turned bad and things was moving there. So, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll try my best answer. I will tell you that it should be around 33% from expenditures and revenues and just looking over it earlier today. We're a little high on some of the expenditures, revenues, about where we thought they were. There's some higher than what we thought.
Yeah, the 2% money was...
2% money is, is...
Strong.
Very strong for, for Zaxby's to be closed for, what, three months there?
Yeah.
You know, um...
Any word on that?
I haven't heard, you haven't heard anything yet?
No, sir.
Don't burn that for him.
They haven't, they haven't done anything, sir. I think it cleaned out a little bit on the inside, but they haven't done anything as far as hooking back up that I know we're on. But if you have any questions, I'll try to answer the best I can on finance.
Anybody? Uh, Mr. F. Biggie Park Planning?
Pleasure to be back with you. Dave, not here with us tonight, but I'm gonna try to go a little quicker than I did last time. I know some information will be the same, some of it's new. But I'll try to go a little faster if you guys wanna have some discussion or had any questions. Just to reiterate, this is a free-based process. We finished up phase three now with the magic plant development. Wanted to present this to you tonight. We met with the DCA Community Alliance back on the 29th, the week it was. Thursday night, we had a two-hour-long meeting. So, we enjoyed talking with them and getting some more feedback prior to coming back to you all. During the process, we spent time with a lot of your key staff, completed background research. We held listening sessions with property owners, like some of the elected officials, downtown stakeholders. We met with over 60 people during the process. Then we had all the fun happening with COVID, and a little bit of slowdown with the project back then. The major areas of recommendations include improving downtown design, that's mostly involves the streetscape and building improvements, expanding the government center, developing festival marketplace around South Plaza and that area, pursuing supporting initiatives that aren't directly downtown initiatives, but support further development of downtown, and also solidifying a downtown management strategy moving forward. As I mentioned, these are the areas that we looked at for the primary recommendations. The street skate is all the way from 6th Avenue south, I believe, there's all the way to the railroad track. Festival marketplace is right there in the center of town where the railroad and the depot are located. The government center is obviously where the county municipal complex is located. And then the gateway, 501, 301 with Main Street. The downtown design initiatives, we start with the streetscape. One of the things we heard during the listening sessions was how to improve the pedestrian environment, bring life back to the street, and how to get more parking spaces. And as we discussed last time, we're able to change the degree of, suggest the changing of the degree of angle parking to net out, you know, almost, you know, a little bit over 100 more spaces in the downtown area on the street. And the purpose, once again, is to create that street life, get people back out on the street, opportunities to eat and dine and walk and shop. Here's some examples of, you know, providing that pedestrian safety for folks to be able to cross the street safely. Here's what that concept looks like. As you can see here, switch from 60-degree, 45-degree angle parking, a little bit wider sidewalks with a simple two-by-two grid. So, if something ever happens, it's easy to go in there and replace that if your maintenance on it. Strategic tree planting, some of your trees, maybe, some of it maybe, some areas need to remove trees. But there's also the idea of making sure you put the trees on the property line to frame the building, not in front of the building, blocking signage and things like that. And as I mentioned, high visibility crosswalks. So, when you're at the intersection, um, right here, you have a shorter distance to cross for the pedestrian. There, you know, no shrubbery in the way, so you can easily see someone crossing the street. And here's what that looks like in plan view. You can see reducing the lanes down the bridge, the turn lane. And we're doing that there, there will be a little bit wider sidewalks, you create more parking in the downtown. One of the things we also wanted to point out was the festival block area around the depot have actually reduced the lanes down to two, to take advantage of a lot of restaurants that are opening up in that area and create even more opportunity for life on the street. Here it is in this area here. And moving ahead, also want to talk about the gateway. I think Dan had described last time, you know, taking the opportunity of 501 and 301 and paying to really tell visitors, it's a unique place. You need to turn here to get to downtown. We're not saying this is what you have to do, but here are some examples. Tree planting in Charlotte, here's an example from Rock Hill. At the point, you have 10,000 to 12,000 drivers coming through that intersection every day. And just, you know, signal to them, this is where you need to turn to get downtown. New wave finding signs also help, you know, provide opportunity to tell people, this way to downtown, shops, dining, et cetera. Downtown design initiatives. We talked to the DCA and have learned that they're gonna be helping with the facade grant process. We think that's great. To have someone help shepherd applicants through the process, and really is an opportunity to leverage the grants that you're providing as a city to get good quality improvements in the downtown. I think having the DCA help with that, hopefully they can help property owners understand that process. Same thing with permitting, ensuring that, you know, folks understand the process of how to get your permit for outdoor dining, and how to do renovations and construction. Once again, DCA, I think is gonna be helping with the city with that as well, provide a little bit more assistance in understanding some of the property owners. Here's an example that we did during the process of the 100 block, and here's what it could look like after. And I know we had a little bit of shortened process this summer, and I'd like to offer to the DCA and the city to be happy to do additional free building renderings over the next six months. I know there's, you know, property owners that are interested in doing some additional work, and we'll be happy to take these existing photographs and do three more to help kind of kick off some activity. The government center, and this recommendation really revolves around taking a look at the police department move. As you know, from the last presentation, the first bank, we really see that as a focal point of the downtown. Certainly, we know you've invested a lot of time and energy into making that the police department, and maybe that's where it ends up going. But one thing we looked at as a team was leveraging that property to generate business and activity in the downtown, and looking at possible opportunities in the government center. And I'll look ahead here, we really see this area where the city complex, city county complexes, and courthouse, and the post office, is an opportunity to build this government center within downtown. You know, are there opportunities of ag building? It's certainly large enough to, to hold the police department. Maybe it could be combined with the county, as a joint partnership on that building or some other government entity. Also, you're limited to opportunity site. Also, you'll notice opportunity site at the corner of Fifth and Main, I believe it's Fifth, I think they're right in front of the grocery store. There's a potential site for some sort of government office, maybe that could be a potential site for the police department. And we know there's concern about parking. We've added parking in this block, you know, on the street, and also potentially behind with old county building, I guess. So hopefully, you know, we understand, you know, you made a lot of efforts that way, and I think what we're recommending is that you at least take a look at it and evaluate it as a potential opportunity. And here's the building now, here's just an example of how to be, you know, dust up a little bit, put these corners, kind of scale it down a little bit for that corner. Festival marketplace, this is an area where you hold a lot of your festivals, but there's lots of things in here, destinations that can be linked together with the theater. You see First Bank with the Dettie Pie, there's a small business center that we'll show an image of in a minute. The mall, and, you know, we also know that you're working on Farmer's Market. And we've developed some concepts of that as far as this presentation, and certainly there's an opportunity site just across road tracks going east. You know, there used to be an old department store, I can't remember if it was there, but it was torn down. The site here.
Belt.
Belt, belt, that's what it was. And, you know, certainly in the future down the road, that's certainly an opportunity site. The whole idea in the, in the festival marketplace is to take advantage of all this energy going on there, redevelop this area into something like this. Expanding the sidewalks where you can create these large plaza areas, and places for people to gather for the timing, this is the depot where you have visitors that do come in by train, maybe more will continue to come in the future. You see in the background, the Farmer's Market, Market Building, and the concept here is that folks can come here to this market building, sell their product, move into the small business center, which would be the First Bank here, to move into that, open up a small retail shop in there, grow their business, and then eventually move out into a building on Main Street. Looking at Market Hall, you know, no big surprise here, these are types thing, type of things you could do in the Market Hall, live music, vintage markets, annual Christmas markets. Here's an example of a, you know, music inside, here's an example of music on the lawn. And here's, here's the site plan view again, you can see how the market can be divided up into spaces for people to sell things in there. And here is a rendering showing what that could look like.
There's a pipe that runs through that.
Right.
Is it east-west or north-south?
The pipe runs north-south in the middle of the property.
So we think, you know, pushing the building up to the street side, get it off of that pipeline. Increase this nice lawn, maybe have to dig up the grass, so there'd be no problem. And once again, this creates parking around this area, and it also creates this venue for outdoor entertainment in the heart of your downtown. All this, again, what we really see is creative infrastructure. You know, you talked about sending sewer lines out to the industrial park, wouldn't think twice about it, but you need to think about the heart of your downtown as building creative infrastructure for business development as well. And this could happen with the Market Hall and the Business Center, people can test new ideas in the community, they have someone who has a product they want to get out there, they just can't afford storefront, can't afford rent. This gives them opportunity to get that, get that idea started and eventually graduate into the small business center, and then eventually move out onto Main Street. Here's the First Bank, and here's what it could look like after, once again, it's one of these storefronts here, could become low-rent spaces for folks wanting to start a business idea, get a business going. And then the other story, we'll see how, here's some examples of some of those rental spaces from different places. We're taking care of the one over here, those Grand Rapids, and a couple of these from some other locations. This is what could happen on the second floor with co-working space, training, you know, small business entrepreneurial development. These are all things that could happen within the small business center. Talking with the DCA, the Dylan Community Alliance, we, you know, they discussed a project of having some sort of an archway for South Plaza to welcome you there. We did a quick rendering of that to show how that could look, and that's how it would look today without the view, streetscape that might be a little more narrow in the future, depending on what you do with the streetscape. Festival marketplace is really opportu, great opportunity to link all kinds of festivals, events, and events, including the auditorium of the Teddy Martin, which is just a few blocks off, hopefully that's moving forward. Still, I think the plans for that auditorium have become something that the community can use. So you could potentially link together lots of different festivals over a weekend, and have people turn their day trips into overnight trips. And I think, you know, there's alcohol sales, hopefully maybe be able to draw in some beer. Lodging, whether it's located downtown or even on the interstate, restaurants, hopefully this is going to generate some activity to help with some of these events. Now, instead of people just driving in for the day for, you know, to take a car to the event, maybe they'll stay overnight. So that's the hope. Downtown management strategy, we feel this is really important, and from what we understand, the DCA is going to be working closely and already partnering with the city on the facade grant program. We really feel that's, that's critical. Every downtown needs someone shepherding the plan, shepherding, you know, business assistants, all these things, somebody has to look out for that. Right now, the DCA does not have full-time staff or even part-time staff, and really, you know, that's one of the keys to success with any Main Street program across the country. They have someone in charge to help volunteers, business owners of the city, bringing all these efforts together moving forward. Take a break here. So the South Carolina Downtown Development Association would be a good resource, as well as the International Downtown Development Association. I think it'd be a good idea to get in touch with both of those groups to find out some help and some assistance and some guidance of the DCA and the city as you go forward in this process. Implementation priorities, and these are just what we're recommending. Certainly, as you get together as a council with the committees, you may come up with some different priorities, so these are just recommended. Year one, we think it's very important to solidify that relationship with the DCA and the city. You know, it's important to understand who's going to do what, what roles we're going to take, what can DCA do, what does the city need to be doing. Movement on the streetscape project, this is actually a great time. DOT is going to be resurfacing Main Street from five oh one, three oh one, through the railroad track, I think in twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
That's, that's on their schedule, yes.
On their schedule. So I've worked with several communities over the years that, you know, this is, you're very fortunate, you've just done this plan, which recommends a new streetscape. Certainly, you have to agree that you want to do that as a council, but if you do, this gives you plenty of time to plan that out, get engineered, do some preliminary work. And the last bullet point, leverage your resources. So the South Carolina DOT is going to be resurfacing, that's a resource, that's money already allocated to that. Some of the flooding issues you had, I think that's a good time to leverage that. And then city, you know, as you begin budgeting, looking at your financial resources and big capital projects, now's the time to start planning for that. You know, it's twenty twenty-three, we'll be here before you know it, but I think this is a great time for you to actually redo the streetscape, because all these efforts are coming together. Because it'd be a shame for the OTs to spend all that money resurfacing, and you missed that chance to refresh the streetscape. Guide property owners through the building renovation grant process, working closely with the DCA. Once again, we just recommend you evaluate the opportunities with the police department, you understand there, you know, you have a lot of effort already put towards that effort, that moving the police department to that building. Create a strategy to implement the festival marketplace. You know, can you get some grant money or some assistance with building a Farmer's Market? First, you have to acquire the property, that's a certain part of it. The archway, there's other improvements, and we recommend you coordinate with the DCA to determine what that would be. Year two to five, you know, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, hopefully, you're finalizing the design and constructing the new streetscape during that five-year period. And incorporating the flooding and drainage improvements that some issues that are in downtown now, hopefully we'll fix those. Build the Market Hall, Farmer's Market, new police department opens in that time period, you know, whether it's in the bank building, the ag building, or another location. And then hopefully, you've been able to work out an arrangement for a small business development center. Even if it's not in the building that we're showing in, in at First Bank, maybe there's another location that that concept could be applied. And then the supporting initiatives, I've talked about a little bit more detail last time, including, you know, marketing plan for the new festivals, making those connections with a lot of big events that happen in Dillon. How can you coordinate those? Develop and implement a wayfinding system. Right now, it's too early to really put up these signs saying go this way, go that way, because there's still a lot that's happening in downtown and developing before you want to invest that kind of money. Design, the Martin Luther King Junior Gateway improvements downtown, and we're talking about Jackson's and main, they've spent a lot of money as a incentive to improve the section going out to Bradford. You know, now looking at, you know, the park from Jackson and the main. Movement on pedestrian improvements, you know, there are a lot of great recommendations in your pedestrian plan to improve connectivity throughout the city, especially in downtown. And then hopefully, you're going to be taking a lot of recommendations from the plan and updating those within that five-year, within that five-year window. So the next steps, we feel there needs to be some continued further discussion with DCA about roles and responsibilities, so that it's clear what the city's working on, what DCA's working on, make sure the coordination there. Budget is critical, so you can begin working on those year one priorities, if that's the direction you decide to go. And then, most importantly, you know, we feel there's a huge opportunity with inland port, and there's a lot of energy, there's that small-town charm and atmosphere that you can't get everywhere. How do you build on all these great things that are happening and tell your story? Because the better you can tell your story, the better you can communicate with the public sector. You know, certainly, you know, the state has invested a lot of money in the inland port. I think it's fair to say, well, what can we do downtown Dillon to improve the downtown? That's only going to support the efforts of developing the inland port. And then share your plans and vision with the private sector. You know, anytime the private sector can see moves that you're making, that's going to encourage them to respond and make moves and invest as well. So it's a great opportunity, you're going to have this plan, these renderings that we've worked on, so that you can share that, package it, go talk to your legislators, talk to people in town, talk to private investors, and say, this is our vision, this is where we want to head. And not only that, you know, I think demonstrating to others that you're doing work yourselves, you know, showing them, this is how we're budgeting to make these improvements happen in downtown Dillon. Will you join us, be our partner, help us develop and do great things in downtown Dillon? So that's the, that's the presentation for tonight. Do you have any, answer any questions?
Pipe, the storm grain pipe, that, that involved, say anything, the storm grain is pipe that we, that's handled straight in.
Yeah, that's true.
And first hand.
The water sewer line that cuts through the property where you showed the Farmer's Market is, what is that, a cut size? Six inch, twelve inch?
So what's the water line?
There's not a water line that cuts through that, you know, you got just sewer.
Six inch?
Which, you know, again, anything that's built there, right now, we'd have to leave that space either parking lot or grass.
What, where?
The cost is.
What does this service, a six-inch? It's always six-inch pipe services, always built?
But it's clay already?
Yes.
I mean, half. Sixty feet, eighty feet?
What?
Eighty-five?
Right.
Hundred fifty, maybe? But then again, I don't know, in, in Arlington, we looked at seventy years ago, wouldn't the fall, if it's relocated?
There's no other way to do, to herd me.
You have, you, you, it wouldn't be enough gravity, it's gravity right now. If you brought it back either to Railroad Avenue, or down the alleyway as it comes, and, and tied it in on South First Avenue or Railroad Avenue, you, you wouldn't have enough gravity, you wouldn't have.
The lift station.
Where you have this.
I mean, I don't have to add an experience, but.
And then where would you put the lift station?
Did you possibly plug back there too?
Yeah. So I mean, right now, it doesn't hurt, if, you just couldn't deal with it structurally, or within fifteen feet of the, I believe, yourself.
Well, if you build your, build your, that's an outdoor building that you're talking about, around the First Bank?
Yeah.
For your market. If you put the tiles, where you easily get to it, is that a problem?
Or does it even run that far up into the lot? No, no, it, it crosses in the middle of the lot, running from the alley to. So what's showing right now, there would be no beach?
Oh, I see, I see.
That was part of the reason we moved it up to the street, you know, one of the, you know, the original sketch is showing that building in the middle of the property. And we saw an opportunity to push it up to the street, kind of extend the downtown in that direction.
All right. Any good questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll get this wrapped up, and once again, you know, committed to, you know, answer questions as you're moving ahead over the next year, and.
Yep.
Happy to continue working with DCA, provide, you know, three or four bedrooms if it's somewhere that you need it. And thank you for all the time, and we really want to see it happen, and we're here to help you.
Well, that by the building on the first, right there on Main Street, that, across from the car, I don't even know what that other.
Railroad.
Railroad, you know, we've, we've done a lot in that building. It, it looks different.
They don't build the new one.
Correct.
The one you have is ready.
Okay, gotcha. I don't know how much I'll be able to see this late at night.
Yeah.
It hurts early.
It's a lesson.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, citizens' report. Got any report?
I just like to say that, you know, we started the Christmas, the, the lights in the trees last year on our end of the block. And if I can get enough volunteers, hopefully after Thursday night's meeting, we will have volunteers to do those things, a plan to extend it on down to Main Street, so it'll be pretty.
Are all the, is all electricity to those boxes?
No.
And we'll work with what we have.
How, how, how big a problem is that, this is mad, is it, is it hot to the box?
Yeah, yeah.
It's hot to the box is out, I think, most of the time, yeah. All right, old business ordinance number twenty dash one five.
Yes, I want.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt you.
I don't have a citizen's report, but I do have a document that I would like to present, and believe to give to each one of the council members.
Okay.
You can present it, this is something that I believe that you guys are going to discuss in the second session.
Okay.
And I think that that is perfect for what you're going to discuss. And if you decide if you think that they're going to get a copy, there's enough copies.
Oh, okay, all right. So that's, that's my, okay. Would you like to just talk about it a bit?
No, sir, I don't think that.
It would be appropriate.
Oh, okay. Did he be invited to the executive session?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Charlie.
Steve, you may go on.
Anyone else?
All right, ordinance number twenty dash one five, maintenance of residential garbage containers, second reading.
This is making the user of our road park feel more accountable.
This is making the user of our road carts feel more accountable in maintaining their road carts, keeping up with the road carts, and also including the price to replace that road cart if the user is found in the delay, as far as burning it, defacing it, not protecting it from moving it off the side of the road back to their property for people in the neighborhood coming by. You just don't take them instead.
Can I get a motion? My second. All those in favor, opposed? Asks. Uh, new business, Department of Municipal Court judges, years reappointment.
This is reappointment of both Judge Spiley and Judge Hayes, still interested. The first agreement we had with them expired in June of this year. And I forgot the date of when they did it, too. They brought it to me last month. We knew we would have it till June of 2022, which would actually be eighteen months.
Need a motion on that? Yeah, okay. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, then we kick it to June one, two.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Um, what's the question? Councilman report. Johnny, you want to start?
Well, are we moving forward with the Christmas tree lighting issue?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. That is Tuesday, December the first at seven p.m. at South Live. I apologize for that. I'm sorry. That's the groundbreaking of First Bank also.
What day beginning?
Tuesday, December the first, seven p.m. Isn't it, is, isn't that, I'm not sure.
That's right.
But there's, if that just came, then it's probably earlier in the day.
Where, where are we at with the laptops for the police car?
Laptops are in, and the office waiting on the stand, whatever it's called, the mounts to put in the car.
When do we proceed that happen?
When we order this, thirty days, and it's been close to that, so we just got it in the doctor's. As soon as we get one, we're, I don't know, a bit of a.
I still get phone calls about the trash can. Have we done anything to try to figure out what the, with the, you know, the tops and the lids and, you know.
Well, they should be, and we've got a new driver now, just replaced the driver. And on rainy days, or it looks like rainy days, we should make sure that the can is closed. Now, as we get newer trash cans in, it's not a problem because they, they do fall down easier. The old trash cans, lids are harder to come down.
Jay? I have a few things. As far as the trash cans, if we could, I've had a few people call me and, and just made a suggestion that if it's concerning the older trash can, if they are getting infected, away they're picked up or whatever, that eighty-five dollars for the old one, I thought it was maybe a little contentious that if they're going to rotate them out to the new one. So I don't know. We're going to be kind of lenient on that. I can understand someone destroys a trash can, but I've watched the way they pick it up and the way it squishes it.
Oh, we don't have any way to get it out, yeah. This is more so they pay on them, they deface them, they tear the lids off of them. We, we have problems turning off. We handle that.
Yeah. Um, the other thing I had here was, I got a lot of positive feedback on your, the paving projects that were done. I know we've done a piece mill in certain areas of the town, but I haven't gotten a lot of positive feedback on what has been done so far.
And that did something the state did on those.
I know part of that was contributed to the C funds or not yet.
I don't think so. I think that was just, well, it could be C funds that the state has, not to the state that the C fund committee.
Okay.
Because in their last round, they did not resurface anything to the city. However, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I sent each one of y'all an email or text to give me a road that you thought you might want to see. So I gave you that list to the C fund crowd for the coming year.
All right. Um, another thing here, I just wanted to give a thanks out to you, Bert. He, Bert does a lot of things in our community, a lot of things go unnoticed. He has prepared some ditch crossings, and I thought it was very beneficial to the city. And I really appreciate you doing that. And I wanted to give a thanks out to DCA and Dylan Harold for their coaching of the facts to those two different questions that we're all about. Because I thought that was very important for that, to get out. I mean, it's a really effective time that it was done, and it's done in a really good manner. The census questions, which I think Dylan Harold has really pushed on our census, I think it's really helped in our community. We, it was tremendous amount of press from Dylan Harold, and I appreciate him doing that because it really means a lot to our community. And I don't think a lot of people understand what it does for our community, but it does do a lot. I thought that's all I had. But I appreciate you both.
First, I wanted to tell them that they're good to have everybody in tonight. And Dylan, good to see you. I said, good to see you now.
Thank you.
Glenn, I want to, do we have anybody now to do the, any grants? For, like, over on First Avenue, First Avenue, any grants for that stuff? I know they're thankful that they're free cases.
It is, and that will be, and we using the cog to do those, so that's on their radar as they come up and try to do.
But down here, at the pool line, right there, crossing it, from, from back there, Cannon Court. If they, who will put, some outstop like that, some, for other folk to come out there and cherish the stuff. Would that be the highway department?
Cannon Court is not willing, no, it's Bert's adding the ramp, that'd be the same.
I need some help there. And part of the, we get the other tree, right? It's on the guy.
Okay. I, you know, I was reminded, um, at front of Corbin Ornette, there's a manhole there. And if you don't miss that, if you.
Johnson Drive?
Right, the Johnson Drive. If you go over that, I mean, it, it jars your teeth.
You know, where's the man?
Um, you know, just look at that, and whether it's, you know, um, I don't know what's going on, but it, it makes you feel a little higher. Yeah, well, no, I don't think it's a manhole. I think there's something, something getting inside. And there's another place my wife pointed out to me, at the very end of Eighth Avenue, or right about two houses before you make that turn on Eighth Avenue, there's a drainage there, and it, right off of the asphalt, it drops down, I bet. I bet a foot and a half.
That's on the claim?
No, but actually, they on Eighth Avenue before you get onto the claim.
Correct, yeah.
And it's, um, it's on the west side of the, uh, it's almost in front of Joe's house, Joe Robbins. It's a, it's just a, it looks like it's a little storm drain.
Well, you got a ditch.
There is a ditch, but the ditch.
They, that runs across Eighth.
Yes, it's right there. The ditch runs right up to the pavement. And if you were to slip off the pavement, it, you, if you look at it, maybe we can't do anything about it, but.
All right.
Those are two areas. I was trying to know.
I don't have any. Been, what about the House of Hudson Street? Do we get any more news on that?
Yes, sir. We're still waiting for the time process to expire. Um, yes, sir. We probably got about another thirty days, and then we'll turn over to you and advertise it.
All right, all right. Um, could I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss economic development on Highway Thirty-four?
Dr. Wallace, could I ask a question, sir? Who's designated to stay back in the executive session? You talk, just the CD staff?
CD.
Who's designated to the executive session? Just the CD staff?
You're talking, yeah. You got the motion?
I got it.
I made a motion. Second. All those in favor? Thank y'all. Appreciate it.